Alrighty ladies and gentlemen, I want to welcome you to our last meeting of the 2012-2013 Council and first meeting of our new council members which will join us here lately or later on tonight. We will start tonight's meeting with a prayer led by Third Ward Councilman Sean Schulte and then we will have a moment of silence for what happened today in Boston and then please join me for our pledge.
Heavenly Father, as the current council comes to a close this evening, we want to recognize Bill Lubert, Brian Pope, and Bob Weber. We thank each of these men for their years of service to our community. We have appreciated and enjoyed their leadership, dedication, and friendship. We ask Father that you grant them and their families an extra measure of your blessings. As the new council is seated later tonight, we thank James Branch, Carlos Graham, and Ken Hussey for their willingness and desire to serve. We ask for your guidance and wisdom as we conduct the business of the city. May all that we do and say bring glory and honor to your name. In Jesus' name, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bray.
Here.
Carol.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Lubert.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Pope.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schulte.
Here.
Scrivner.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Alright, we have a quorum tonight. Appreciate everyone being here. First we have on the agenda tonight proclamation that deals with Fair Housing Month. Janice, is there someone here to receive that proclamation?
This is kind of the game show host to be a mayor. A lot of these proclamations tonight, like I said, these were actually read earlier today here at City Hall and the locations around town, but I want to give you this on behalf of the city. May is obviously Fair Housing Month, or soon April is, and this has been part of the Civil Rights Act, obviously one back in 1968.
Next on our agenda tonight, we have a proclamation of a National Public Safety Telecommunications Week and I think-
Captain Sanova has some guests and if you guys could please come forward, we'll give you your proclamation. I was lucky enough this year over Christmas, actually Christmas Eve, my daughters and wife who came down here to just kind of see what was going on, to wish you guys well, but my oldest, I think she could almost be one of you guys because she loves computers and she loves being on the phone. There's no doubt, I know as a former firefighter, that what you all do every day is really the very first step in our emergency response. I know many times we read and hear what you guys do to small children, to help them save their mothers or fathers' lives, or whatever it might be. And even though you're not seeing that in public, I think obviously this proclamation is a good way for you all to be recognized in what you do for the city. So definitely appreciate what you do.
Okay, our next proclamation here this evening is dealing with Host Lions and Sight I gotta admit, since becoming mayor, my Wednesdays are a little full so I don't get to see all these guys that often. We have a former visitor here, a former employee, but Lyle, can I ask, can I count this as a Lion make-up meeting?
Obviously, this is about Sight Week and I'm very proud to be part of this organization for what you guys do to stomp out blindness and all the other fundraisers that you do throughout the community and throughout the world is definitely very, very much appreciated. And we thank you for everything that Lions do.
Thank you for being here.
I didn't realize Roger owned a pair of jeans till just now.
Alright, next, Mr. Lockwood. Thank you gents, see you soon. Who won the pot of gold?
Someone named Fred, we can't remember.
Oh, okay, okay.
Mr. Lockwood, there's no doubt that our city has a tremendous, a lot of trees and beautiful parks that year in the department overseas, and this is actually in observance of Arbor Day, which is April 27th, and I know this is especially near and dear to my heart, as you know, my dad worked part-time with your department, and he always talked about having to cut around all those little bitty trees with those little plaques on the walkways and stuff. They're obviously in memorials for people that have passed and that kind of deal, and I think it's a great tradition that you guys have done that. Just appreciate everything that you guys do.
Thank you. I'd especially thank Keanu E who provides funds for some of our Arbor Day tree plans and also serves Jeff City and other groups that we have on this Arbor Day plan and trees as part of their service to the city.
Great, alright, thank you Bill.
Okay, moving on here, next, something that has become a tradition is our South School Essay Contest winners, and I'm gonna invite both girls right up here, if you can come around the backside here. You get to sit in the mayor's chair, it's, you shouldn't get lost in it because they had to create a new one just for me because landwear was so tall, you know? But Schulte, if you would introduce our winners, and ladies, I'll turn this over and individually you'll be able to read your essays.
Okay, thank you Mayor. It's my privilege to introduce my special guests tonight at the council meeting, Scarlett and Sierra. They were the winners of the 5th grade essay contest at South Elementary School. This essay contest has been hosted now by former Councilman Coon for the last six or seven years, I believe, and with the help of their teachers, Mrs. Thompson and Mrs. Massman, the 5th grade class wrote essays this year, "If I Were Mayor." Those essays were then judged by a panel, and Scarlett and Sierra were the winners. So part of their winnings is they get to come sit in the mayor's seat and read their essays to us. So Scarlett, if you will go first, that would be great.
Good evening, my name is Scarlett Wickham.
My name is Sierra Richardson. We are 5th grade students from South, at South Elementary School.
We are participating in an essay contest supported by City Councilman Sean Schulte and former City Councilman Rich Coon. Mr. Coon donated some fabulous, fabulous prizes and medals.
The theme for the essay was "If I Were Mayor." We thought about some things we wanted to see change.
City Councilman Coon arranged for a guest speaker to come to our school. We heard from Mayor Eric Trump.
Scarlett and I placed in the top two at our school. We would like to share our essays with you tonight. Scarlett will go first and I will follow her. Thank you for listening.
If I were mayor, I would add a recreation center so people can have a fun place to go if it's too hot or too cold outside. I would also add more bus transportation so people don't have to walk as much. This recreation center would include an Olympic-sized swimming pool, miniature golf, workout rooms, gyms, an arcade room, shuffleboard, ping pong, a pool, a Wii, an Xbox, and a Kinect. I would do this because people need a place to go when it's too hot or too cold. Also, it would be a fun place to go with your family and friends. Now let's talk about transportation. If I were mayor, I would add more bus transportation during the day and night. Why would I do this? Some people don't have a car so they don't, so they can't, so they don't have to walk in the cold or hot weather, and they probably don't want to do that. Also, maybe where you're going is far and you don't want to walk that far. Buses can help. Also, it would prevent people from getting shot, beat up, or beat up. Buses might help those people. It would also keep people off the street at night when they're walking to the store to work. These are the things I would do if I were mayor, add a recreation centers and more bus transportation during the day and night. A recreation center would make Jefferson City a better place because it is a safe place to go with friends and family. Bus transportation can help people get where they are going quicker than walking. This will mean that Jefferson City will be safer and have more places to go with family and friends.
I know most people love Jefferson City, from its schools to its stores, it's an overall good place. That doesn't mean it doesn't have any flaws. If I were mayor, I would change two things. I would make the animal shelters in the city bigger and better. I would also want to make sure that the parks in the city get renewed every year. If I were mayor, I would make the animal shelters bigger and better. I have been to animal shelters in town and they only hold X amount of pets, but I think we should fix that. Reason one, the animals shelters in Jefferson City's, the animals in Jefferson City's animal shelters are often strays or puppies. They don't know how to interact with other dogs. If we put these dogs in cages with other dogs, they are not likely to get along. Reason two, I think every dog should have a different sized cage according to their breed. Reason three, my dog was born in a litter of seven puppies. They either had to be sold or transferred to St. Louis because the animal shelters were too overcrowded. That is why we need to make animal shelters bigger and better. My second change is to restore city parks at least once a year. Reason one, from personal experience, after a park is a couple of years old, it starts to get dirty and unsafe. Like Memorial Park, it is made out of wood and is starting to cause splinters. The slides look like they're about to fall off and the swings are even worse. If it's possible, we should make the parks more kid-friendly. I'm not saying we should destroy every park and start from scratch, but the parks definitely need some renovating. Those are the reasons why I think we should be renovating city parks more often. Now you have seen my point of view. You have seen further into the reasons why I think we should change how big the animal shelters are and why we should renovate city parks more often. I want to know your opinion about my topics. Everybody loves Jefferson City, but that doesn't mean it doesn't have any flaws.
Rich Coon, could you come forward please?
Rich started this whenever he was on the city council a few years ago. Rich, how many years in total have we been doing this with South School?
Six.
Great. I want to thank you for doing this, I want to thank Sean for continuing it.
Well, I'm gonna thank Councilman Schulte for continuing it and for you allowing the students to sit in your chair.
Glad to do it, Rich. Always good to see you in the council chambers, guy, don't be a stranger.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next we have, we are going to be recognizing the winners of the Board of Realtors Fair Housing Poster Contest. And I believe Hank Voight is here, and he's gonna be making the presentation from there.
On behalf of the Jefferson City Area Board of Realtors, I would like to thank the mayor and city council for recognizing April as Fair Housing Month. This is our sixth year sponsoring the contest and we had 122 entries. The contest is open to all 4th, 5th, and 6th grade students within the jurisdiction of the Jefferson City Area Board of Realtors, which is Cole, Callaway, Monata, and Osage Counties. This year's theme was "Fair Housing Equals Open Hearts and Open Neighborhoods." All the posters are on display at the Capitol Mall through the end of the month. We'd like to thank our sponsors Jefferson Bank, Central Bank, Regions Bank, Community Point Bank, and the City of Jefferson, and our judges, who are County Commissioner Jeff Helscher, School Board President Joyce Sweeney, and Sarah Porter, Coordinator of Adult Education and Literacy and English as a Second Language. We are proud to recognize and award the students for earning top honors in the contest this year. As your name is read, please come forward.
Nathan Lowery, Grade 4, 1st place.
Nathan? You use that name a lot around here, young man. That's his name. You could be him someday. Wouldn't that be fun? Hey, thanks for doing this. Alright, you have a great, are your parents here? Moms here? Alright, stand right there. Alright, wait mom.
Paige Club, Grade 4, 2nd place.
Good job. Are your parents here? Huh? Wait mom. There you go.
Casey Dunavent, Grade 4, 3rd place.
Hi Casey, how are you? That's a great picture, what, tell me what all that means. I know it's hard, is that hard, is that what I'm saying? But it's about love and family and neighbors and that kind of thing. Well, that's awesome. For a 4th grade, you just keep that, are your parents here? Come over here. It's okay. Parents are just like that.
Jalen Engelbrich, Grade 5, 1st place.
So you want to tell me more about yours? What were you trying to do there? I see the post office up there, eh? Now is that hearts coming out of the post office still? This wasn't like around that one back there, was it? No? Are your parents here? Alright, there you go. Let you hold both of those. Alright, thanks for being involved.
Kaylee Miller, 5th grade, 3rd place.
She could make it tonight, we understand, so.
Haley Mealy, 6th grade, 1st place.
Is this the first time you've won something like that? Is it really? Where's your parents? Oh, let's turn around here. Here, you hold that. You gotta smile real big, okay? That's very good, you should be very proud of yourself.
Cheyenne Harlan, 6th grade, 2nd place.
Thanks for being here, it's a beautiful picture. Have you done this before? Have you? Did you place last time?
Oh, not here.
Oh, okay, well cool. Turn around, you got the, there's your parents there? There you go. There's that. Got it? Alright, thank you very much.
James Street, 6th grade, 3rd place.
James, thanks for being here. Have you done this before? No? First time? Where's your parents at? Alright, there you go. Can you hold that? There you go. Thank you. Yes, if you would, that'd be great. And thank you for your help, I appreciate it.
Want to thank those sponsors again. Hank, if you could, hit that microphone and tell us again who they were.
It was Jefferson Bank, Central Bank, Community Point Bank, the City of Jefferson, Regions Bank, and that's it. We appreciate it.
Alright, thank you. Next we have tonight, we have Angela Beldon. Angela is with the Missouri Department of Conservation and she's a resource forester. Good evening.
I just came here to welcome Jefferson City for becoming Tree City USA for the 15th year in a row, and I just wanted to let everyone know, as a forester, I'm kind of big on trees, that trees are a vital component of the infrastructure in our cities and provide environmental, psychosocial, and economic benefits to all of our citizens. The Tree City USA designation recognizes the work of elected officials, staff, and citizens who plant and care for the city's community forest. A community such as Jefferson City that recognizes the benefits that trees provide and provides needed care for its trees deserves recognition and thanks. It's for that reason that on behalf of the National Arbor Day Foundation, I am proud to present the City of Jefferson with the Tree City USA designation for the 15th year.
Awesome. I'll tell you what, we'll just sit in this here for now, then we'll make sure that both of you guys put that to the right side. Thank you for being here. Next we have, last but not least, a friend of mine from the CVB. We have a Capital City Corvette Classic coming up, unfortunately, in May, and Mr. Chris Wilson has worked extremely hard, there's a director and even old director, to try to pull this thing off. Chris, welcome tonight. We're glad, we're very glad that you could be here.
Thanks for having me. And Mayor Trump, you've been certainly instrumental in all this too. I'm gonna speak about a new upcoming event here in just a second, but once again, my name is Chris Wilson, I am the sports and film sales manager for the Jefferson City Convention and Visitors Bureau, and I just wanted to thank the city council, the mayor, the city officials, and the citizens of Jefferson City for allowing me this opportunity to talk about the inaugural Capital City Corvette Classic, which is scheduled for May 3rd and 4th of this year. And I've got to tell you, kind of preface this by saying, I've learned more about Corvettes in the last six months than I have in the first 30 years of my life, so it's been a great learning experience and I look forward to learning more about them. A little background on this event, it's been amazing over the last six or so months, the amount of passionate Corvette owners in this area and really throughout the Midwest, and there are several popular Corvette shows in Arkansas, Oklahoma, Illinois, and throughout the state of Missouri. And there's been a lot of interest in creating a Corvette show here in Jefferson City, and a lot of people have come up and said that, and these are Corvette owners, that we have the right location, the right features, and the volunteerism to make this a great event, and I agree as well. What is the Capital City Corvette Classic? The Jefferson City Convention and Visitors Bureau, along with the Heart of Missouri Corvette Club, has created a two-day event featuring Corvettes and their owners in Jefferson City without activities throughout the day on Friday, and peaking with a Corvette show around the South Circular Drive of the Capitol on Saturday. And I'll speak more about the actual outline and itinerary here in a second. And the purpose, the purpose of this event was to create a new signature event in Jefferson City that would cater to local and out-of-town participants by showcasing our beautiful city parks, our state Capitol, our downtown, really our entire city, and of course, our welcoming, hospitable nature. We would like to make this an annual event with room for growth potential. And with that said, I'll just briefly go after, and I was told to make this brief, so we'll do so. As far as the outline and the itinerary of the event, Friday, May 3rd, early registration from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at Riverside Ellis Porter Park, the Upper Pavilion, and we think this is a great place to begin the Corvette Classic with the majestic view of the Missouri River. We might also have some homemade cinnamon rolls as they begin their journey in Jefferson City. Participants will receive goodie bags and packets, and the packets will include scenic road trips, and these are optional, to surrounding areas for Friday afternoon, as well as a late-night cruise in Jefferson City after the meet and greet barbecue Friday evening. And as far as that late-night cruise, the Jefferson City Police Department will be forewarned if they see a lot of Corvettes driving around it late at night between the 10 and 11 hour. Going back to the meet and greet barbecue, the meet and greet barbecue will take place at the Memorial Park Pavilion from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Friday night of May 3rd. We will be catering in bandanas, barbecue, sides, and drinks. Registration will also be available at this time, but this will be an opportunity for participants to enjoy some complimentary barbecue and meet some of their contemporaries, and we will also have some Corvette raffle giveaways at this time. And kind of going back to the late-night cruise, that'll be from 10:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., and will feature some of the well-lit areas in Jefferson City such as West Edgewood. The Corvette show itself is scheduled for Saturday, May 4th. Setup will be from 9:00 a.m. to noon, and the car show will be from noon to 4:00 p.m. The car show will take place around the South Circular Drive of the Capitol. There will be six classes, there will be a C1 through a C6, and that's broken down on the year of the model of the Corvette. There will be three plaques per class, a Best of Show trophy, and of course, a Mayor's Cup. And we've had great sponsorship participation up to this point, and we're very thankful for that. A little bit of the background on the cost, you have two divisions, you have your judged division, which is $20 per Corvette, and that includes the goodie bag, the packet, the complimentary barbecue and drink, and entry into the car show, and then you have the non-judged for $10, which is simply the car show only and not eligible for prizes. Registration is available at our office, over the phone, or online at CapitalCityCorvetteClassic.wordpress.com or at different times during the event. We plan on having a strong contingent from Springfield and Kansas City that we know of at this time, and a strong local crowd. In fact, about a month ago, we had a Corvette owner come up from Springfield, Missouri just to scout out the location and see what was all involved with the itinerary, and it happened to be a beautiful day in Jefferson City, and that certainly doesn't hurt, but he was pleased and impressed by what he saw, and he went back to his Corvette club down in Springfield and reported about what he had saw to his Corvette club, and he's coming up and seven other Corvettes. So it's, like I said, it's a passionate group of people, and we feel that our most effective way is word of mouth by what they see in Jefferson City and what we can offer with some of these features. Expectations for this first year? We want to create a well-organized, quality car show with anywhere from 50 to 75 Corvettes. We want guests to return not only for the annual car show, but also to visit Jefferson but also to visit Jefferson City for other reasons. To visit all of our attractions and everything Jefferson City has to offer. All participants will sign a waiver releasing the CVB, the city, the state, and others from any liability claims that may transpire during the Corvette Classic. And then, of course, there's one thing that we're all hoping for, but it's simply out of our control, and that's the elements. So we're hoping for nice weather, May 3rd and 4th. As far as your involvement, we'd like to encourage you to visit the website. And please help get the word out about the event to any friends or family in the area or outside the area that would have an interest in participating. Thanks again to Mayor Strumpf. Thank you again for this opportunity, and we look forward to the first annual Capital City Corvette Classic.
Chris, thank you for being here. Any questions from the council to Chris? Chris, thanks for all your work. I know Darla and I have seen firsthand and several members of our local club. We've gone to Eureka Springs and Little Rock and towns like that. And hopefully, we'll see a good contingency of Corvettes here and something we can keep in the future.
Absolutely. We're excited about it.
Something I think we're very passionate about.
I have some flyers here I'd like to hand out, if that's okay.
Go right ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Make sure Madeline back there in the back gets one. Okay, moving on to public hearings. Now we'll have a public hearing, and this is about some rezoning. And at this point in time, I'll call on Janice McMillan, who heads our planning and zoning department. Janice, thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. The first bill is Bill 2012-160, 3117 Morrel View Drive. This concerns the rezoning of .9 acres of land from C1 neighborhood commercial to RS2, single-family residential, and endorsing an associated comprehensive plan amendment. This particular case was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting on March 14th. And the property is across the street from Scholastic, the Scholastic Warehouse on Robinson Road. It was previously zoned C1 neighborhood commercial, so that Scholastic could use the property as a parking lot. They have developed a parking lot and did use the house that's currently on the property as an office. But that use is no longer being conducted there, and Scholastic wishes to sell the property and convert that to, back to, single-family residential. As I mentioned, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this application for rezoning at their meeting on March 14th and recommended it be approved on a vote of eight in favor and zero against. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff on the bill that's pending is 2012-160? Seeing none, debate? At this point in time, we will open up the floor for anyone, for the public, since this is a public hearing, that would like to speak for 2012-160. Mr. Bates, welcome.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Mike Bates, Central Missouri Professional Services, 2500 East McCarty Street. As Janice said, good background. The property adjoins the existing majority of single-family residential. Scholastics may realize a higher return by keeping it as C1 neighborhood commercial, but their intent is to be complementary of the neighborhood. It has the potential for two or three single-family residential lots, and I think that's their goal. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Bates? All right, thank you, Michael. Anyone else here to speak for 2012-160? All right, we'll close that portion. Anyone here to speak against 2012-160? Seeing no one, we will close that public portion of this hearing. And I'll ask the council if there's any questions of staff. Seeing none, is there any debate? Seeing none, roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Third reading first. Thank you, fellas.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the City of Jefferson by rezoning .90 acres from C1 neighborhood commercial to RS2, single-family residential for land addressed as 3117 Morrel View Drive, described as part of the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 22, Township 44 North, Range 11 West, Jefferson City, Cole County, Missouri.
Roll call, please.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of Bill 2012-161.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, repealing the special exception use permit granted by ordinance number 13904 and approving a new special exception use permit for open land for property addressed as 2301 Green Meadow Drive, described as Reserve Tract A, Rivers Edge Estates subdivision, Jefferson City, Cole County, Missouri.
Janice.
Thank you, Mayor. This property consists of bottom land along the Morrel River that was platted as Reserve Tract A in Rivers Edge Estates subdivision in 2000. A special exception use permit to establish a conservation or savanna area was approved in 2005 by Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. The special exception use permit was approved under ordinance 13904, and it included some provisions that topsoil could be removed, that row crops or hay could be grown, and also allowed a storage building to be constructed there. The savanna portion of the plan was never fully implemented, and the property has been farmed with hay since that original approval. The current owners acquired the property last year. They've harvested hay on the land for the past several years, and they proposed to discontinue that prior savanna use and instead establish an agricultural-oriented use on this property. A buffer of 15 feet from the adjacent property lines adjacent to the residential areas has been proposed. There also is included a buffer along the Morrel River and along the tributary that runs through the property. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this application for the new special exception use permit at their meeting on March 14th and recommended it be approved. That vote was eight in favor and zero against. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff on 2012-161? Seeing none, anyone here to speak in favor of 2012-161? Welcome. Please tell us your name and address.
Keith Hoon, 130 Coyote Lane, West Salem, Missouri. As she said, I purchased property back in December of 2012, and I have been farming about 15 to 20 acres over the last several years. And what I'm asking to do is to finish clearing the rest of the bottom out, to put it back where it used to be back in 1960. It was all cropland at that point in time, and to just start farming it again without livestock, obviously. Any questions?
Okay, any questions of the presenter? Thank you, sir, for being here tonight. Anyone else here to speak in favor of 2012-161? Seeing none, anyone here to speak against 2012-161? Seeing none, we will close the public portion of this hearing. Any debate or questions by council members on 161? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Carroll.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Now we'll move on to number seven on our agenda, and this is minutes and reports filed here at City Hall. Include the Police Personnel Board, certification of the Cole and Callaway County April 2nd elections, Campo Technical Committee, and the Board of Adjustments. Next, we'll move into, by the way, if you want to serve on one of our boards or commissions, please contact Gail Strope, who's our Human Resource Director. Or you can go to our website, which is www.jeffcitymo.org. At this point in time, we'll have the last committee reports of this council. First is Carrie Carroll in the Admin Committee.
Thank you. Administration Committee met March 27th, and three items that will carry over to our new council will be the bill amending requirements for sidewalk café permits, the ordinance to extend the residency requirements for department heads, and the JCTV contract. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Carrie. And Carrie, thank you for serving on that committee's chair. Next, we have the Finance Committee chaired by Sean Schulte. Sean.
Thank you, Mayor. The city received the April 1% sales tax in the amount of $777,000, which is approximately $75,000 less than projected for the month of April. November through April shortage is $59,000 in the general fund. The half-cent capital improvement tax was received in the amount of $372,340, which is $34,000 below budget year-to-date for the fiscal year. And then the half-percent park sales tax was received in the amount of $372,242, which represents a shortfall of $9,332 for the fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. And Sean, there again, thank you for your leadership, especially over the last few months with our budget of 2013. Moving on, Public Safety Committee has been chaired by Brian for the last two years. Is that correct?
Right.
By Dr. Pope.
The Public Safety Committee has no report tonight since we have not met since the last council meeting.
All right. Thank you, Brian. And Brian, thanks for your leadership in that field. Moving on, Public Works and Planning Committee has been chaired by Bob Scrivner. Mr. Scrivner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have not met since our last council meeting, our last report, but I do want to thank two of our, I guess I'll call them retiring members that have been on the committee and been faithful and hardworking. And that's Bob Weber and Bill Lubert. And I want to thank you guys for serving and wish you well.
Hank, we'll have more of that to come. Thank you. Next, under ad hoc committees, I know Larry Henry's been very busy with an ad hoc committee dealing with JCTV. Do you have a follow-up on that, Larry?
At this time, Mayor, we don't. Our last meeting was March 21st, and our next meeting is to be announced.
All right. Thank you for your leadership there. Moving on, under number nine, announcements of other upcoming meetings and events. Ms. Janice McMillan again.
Thank you, Mayor. This has to be my favorite time of year, not just because it's spring finally, but because it's also time for our citywide residential large bulky items pickup. And that started today on the east side of town, east of Jefferson Street. And will begin Monday, April 22nd, next week, for the areas west of Jefferson Street. And I'd like the public to be aware that this event is for large bulky items such as furniture, televisions, microwaves, tied bundles of scrap material under four feet in length. Mattresses will be picked up. But if it's something that will fit in the blue cart, it must be placed in the blue cart. So that means that any bags of trash or such needs to be placed in the blue cart. For things that are not picked up this week or next week, we do have an e-waste and appliance collection date scheduled for Saturday, April 27th, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and that's at Midwest Recycling Center. They'll take e-waste and appliances. And we also have 13 household hazardous waste dates. So if anybody has household hazardous waste that needs to be collected, please call the department number. It's 634-6410, and make an appointment to drop those off. Thank you.
All right, Janice. Any questions of Janice? Bob, do you have a question? Oh, sorry. I thought you were heading towards the microphone there. Drew, can you give us an update as far as what can be taken? Once, if Mrs. Strumpf puts my golf clubs up by the front of the road, can someone else come get them? I don't know if they'd really want them. There's a lot of good shots in them yet, but...
I think it's pretty safe to say that when you put your stuff on the curb during this time, it is considered abandoned. If you don't want something taken, better keep it in the house.
Put it in the trunk of the car.
That's right.
But that is fine, probably, for people to come and get what they want, whether it's scrap metal or just really whatever's there, I guess, as long as they leave it in a nice, neat form whenever they're done.
I suspect that it will be considered abandoned by all involved.
All right. Thank you. Next, I have on the agenda tonight, earlier at our pre-meeting, there was a motion to bring up Resolution 2012-29. And I would ask the clerk to read that summary, please.
A resolution authorizing the city administrator to restore $55,000 in funding to the Transit Division and expressing the council's intent to further study the transportation needs of the community.
Okay, with that, who's the staff person on this, Bob? Is it Drew?
Could be.
Go ahead, sir.
This ordinance would restore the $55,000 that was taken out during the recent budget adjustments. It would put that money back in. And it authorized the city administrator to fund it through the vacancy savings or any other funding source that he can find. And it expresses the council's intent to study the transportation system and get input from all the stakeholders and request an outside consultant as well. So that'll be a process that'll all be brought forward and requests that the, or directs the city administrator to put all this together in an ordinance and bring it back to the next council.
I was just asking City Administrator Nicholas, Nathan, what's your thoughts as far as trying to get a professional in here or someone with an RFP to kind of tell us how we can make this transit system better? I know we're moving from one council to a new one tonight, but how do you see that coming forth in the next month or so?
I think that what we would want to do is put together some sort of a committee and some staff ideas about who should be those stakeholders that are represented, at least in terms of their job descriptions, not necessarily identifying them particularly. And then kind of a general outline of what we think the RFP would be attempting to accomplish, and probably take that to Public Works Committee, get their approval on the general concept, and then start the RFP process. And I think there would need to be an ordinance ultimately to seal everything.
To do that. Okay. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to accept Resolution 2012-29.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Scrivner, who's the sponsor of this, and seconded by Councilman Schulte. And for the record, this has been co-sponsored by Councilman Mahalovich, Bray, Henry, Schulte, Carrie. Are you seeing a pattern here? Lubert, Prather, and Weber. So I thank the tremendous support. But Bob, I know this was your idea. We talked about this Friday. What would you like to say, sir?
Well, I'd just say I'm actually the one who, I guess, gets credit for sponsoring it. But there were a number of council people, in fact, everyone, that had the same feeling. I just ended up being the one who participated in drafting it. But I think that the council understands the need and also understands that we need to study this issue. It's not something that is necessarily, the need to resolve this issue isn't going away. But we also understand that it's more of an in-depth issue that needs to be studied carefully and needs input from the entire community. When this is all said and done, we would hope that the community would tell us just what they want their transportation system to look like and how they want to fund it.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Mr. Pope.
Mr. Mayor, procedurally, I would request that we divide this resolution, one and two being a vote, and three and four being a vote. I think restoring the funds in item one and two is one issue. And then the request of a proposal, to pursue an RFP, and then an ordinance to follow up on that is really another question. And I would like to see us consider these separately.
Bob, would you be willing to make that change?
I think that's something that the council should vote on.
Okay.
In that...
In other words, is there, I guess I would take that as an amendment, Dr. Pope?
My understanding was that, from a procedural point of view, a councilman can request that a resolution be divided without a vote.
So there's a motion on the floor to divide the question. Is there a second? Motion dies due to lack of second. Now we're back to the original motion as presented, or the original resolution, which is RS 12-21. Now we're back to the original motion as presented, or the original resolution, which is RS 12-29. Any other discussion or questions of staff members by council? Seeing none, any more council debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Pope.
No.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
And motion passes. Next we have, under Presentations from the Gallery...